Please join me to pay tribute to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, please watch over this commission as we do the job for the citizens that we were asked to do. Please lead us in the right way and make the right decisions.
Now, call this meeting at four thirty six. First up, we got the Sunday agenda meeting. We've got the minutes and the regular position meeting on nine twenty. We've got the special meeting on nine twenty one. Anyone have a chance to look those over? Any questions?
Same minute.
Thursday. Talking about Commissioner Ashburn. All in favor, say aye.
Four thirty seven. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're finally in a new budget year. Our meeting next Tuesday, here by the way. We have a lot of big plans this year. Hope to do a lot in Core Park. We had the historical grant to work on Edmond and get our Brick Promenade built and some other things built in Core Park. We also have the site on Bourbon Street Gateway, entrance gateway to downtown. We have some improvements to Bill Joe Rich Deck and Fourth Street. Full pot of facade grant money again this year. I've already had three inquiries in two days. So, that money should be gone pretty quick this year. I think people will call on to that grant money.
Very good deal.
It is a good deal. It's a better deal this year than it was last year, actually, I find. Better for the business situation. With that, are there any questions? Oh, we also had changed our landscape agreement up a little bit. I think they have much better product, our landscape maintenance than we had in the past. We've increased our budget a little bit to get more pine straw, better weeding, more control. So, I think I'll be a better product this year going forward.
Bill, to clarify, the meeting is next Tuesday. What time?
Five fifteen.
And this location?
Yes.
Pass that on to the board.
Well, I will, trust me. Multiple texts. Are there any questions or comments?
Bill?
No, Bill, I appreciate you helping out this week with the Scholar Fest.
That will mention that as well. We, I will stay down as much as I could take it. And the reason was, I wanted to see how the park was being used and utilized, what the needs were, and for park growth in the future, what we can do better. Where power is needed, lights are needed, vendor reactions, vendor responses. It was very helpful, very helpful.
I tell you, that parking made a big difference. And, Bill, also, I was walking around down there and dodging the roots and you may want to remind everyone, we're still looking at thinning the trees and bringing Phil in to smooth that thing out and make it a lot easier to get around, especially when it's a little light.
I'm glad you mentioned that as well. That's probably our first order of business because that would give the turf longer to respond for next year, to get that damage taken care of and get the field brought back in, some seed, some sod started. And, of course, they also lose some power down there in that area. I'm hoping to get the Scholar Fest folks, the money they paid for the generator this year, if they can give that to us and go towards the permanent power, to replace the generator.
And the new stage at some point in time.
Yes, sir. We're going to try to get there. On the historical grant for Edmond, I don't know how far that money's going to go. I'm looking after kicking in to get that house condition. The AC was kind of estimated low, I know that for sure. I hope we can make it up in other places.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Shift Yard Cove hearing is next Tuesday. I talked to Mel about it today. We're going to get together on Thursday and put together our side of the case and hopefully we'll have a successful resolution of that. Any questions about that?
Resolution regarding recreation fees, page six, seven, and eight in your package.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. We read the resolution and with the comment that basically these changes are what we agreed on last meeting.
All right, we have a question, my Commissioner, does that, you have a second? Second, my Commissioner Ashburn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
The non-departmental funding update, we'll have a resolution to y'all next time outlining and hopefully so you'll have an opportunity to look at it as well in advance of the next meeting. Covering those issues, that's the, put the contribution on the water bill and use it to fund some of those obligations. City property, I don't think anything's changed. I don't believe we've seen an appraisal on this building.
We need to try to, next meeting, go ahead and figure that one out and something else I think we need to discuss. We've got a man that's, whether, I don't know where he stands or where, that's a potential buyer for this building. If we're going to sell it, we need to go ahead and list it with our broker. But if we're not going to sell it, we need to reach out to this man, let him know that we've decided to take it off the market before he goes through all this work to get financing and what have you. So, guys, we need to just discuss, is this building, are we going to sell it or we're not going to sell it? I said two weeks ago that my main reason for wanting to sell the building was to try to help meet the budget. We passed the budget. We had to cut back on some things, but the budget is passed now. So, you know, we need to probably put it to a vote at some point, whether we're going to sell it or not sell it.
Well, we also discussed using that money to extend the Long Avenue favor project and we already voted to sell it. So, I guess we'd have to vote not to sell it. But I think.
You're going to sell it or just give it to?
Well, we voted to have it appraised and get it to the realtor to sell. So, well, not to me, but to sell.
The consensus is that I'm getting now from just hearing everyone else talking, I don't know that anybody else is interested in selling it now. You know, if as the board wishes, I'm okay with it. But if as the board wishes not to, as a majority, I'm good with not selling.
And my thoughts on that, Commissioner, there, I think I said at the last meeting, I'm fine hanging on to this building, most of the work it takes to maintain it, I don't want it to just fall down around us.
I agree with that. And I always said, I don't want to sell it. I think it has potential for the city, we might need it sometime. And I tell you, a week goes by and at least two, three people are still preaching, well, y'all know people sell it. I mean, I don't think consensus is a must. I don't want a must, but a lot of the people around town do not want us to sell it. They see it as a potential place for the city. So, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I agree with you. I voted against selling this building. It's, if we need to discuss it a little bit more, I'm up for it, but.
Well, I just don't want this man to keep going through. I don't know whether he is or not, but if he's out there searching for ways to get this thing financed, we need to let him know one way or another whether we're going to sell it or not. It is on the agenda tonight. Y'all wanted to vote on it tonight, whether it's, take it not for sale, we can do that. But if y'all want to wait two weeks, I'm fine with that.
William, that's an open motion that would draw order of killing on the sale as long as we can, give comp to the realtor and use the proceeds, that or portion of the proceeds to fix up this area. Electric check out.
I'm okay with that, David said, one thing, is I don't want to give it to a realtor because I don't, I think that's a deal that we can make on our own.
So.
Your price price?
Oh, I don't think.
Where are we getting the price for it?
I don't either. Nobody else is going to want it because where is that?
We're paying fifteen thousand dollars a year, every year we keep it.
How long we had that piece of property?
Ten years.
Fifteen thousand dollars. You know, my thing is on that, yes, I did want to sell that, but I think what we need to do is, is see if you can put something out there that we're going to sell it and take some, take some debts on it and, or, you know, what have you, take some offers and bring it to the board and do the best offer we can get on it and let's sell it. No, I'm against the realtor, Dave, but just.
I'm just saying, if there's already bids that run out there, that's kind of determining the process. So, I don't know if our current bidder would consider that affair offering.
I would like to give him the first offer, what he would offer for it.
Yeah, I think it would be on his bear myself.
Well, the location of that property really only makes sense to him. It's an L shape that surrounds the piece of property that he's already on. It really, honestly, I don't think you'll get someone that could utilize the property.
And I'm, I'm taking the money, the proceeds and fixing up this building.
Would you be willing to? Or some of them. Try to go and take some of the proceeds, let's just change, take some of the proceeds to fix up.
Why don't we do this, let's knock half of it out now and I make a motion to withdraw number of rich building, giving it to a realtor. If it's not for sale, that'll be, that'll be the first part of the motion.
My question, Commissioner Ashburn, any further discussion?
Yeah, I think we just need to make up my mind what we're going to do. I mean, we're spending, I don't know, much money on appraisals, that's something we voted on. And I would assume everybody would think, when they vote on something, that's what they want to do. But to keep, keep going back and forth with what we want to do every other meeting, we were sending a motion or something passed at other meetings, that's just something that we need to think about doing. So, we need to think a little bit more about what decision we do make and let's kind of either stick with it or vote against it. So, like I say, we paid an appraiser for Ward Ridge and we paid it for Commerce, something we voted for a month ago. Voted to give it to a realtor, now we don't want to give it to a realtor.
Did you sign an appraisal of this building?
Yeah, we ordered it and it's probably going to be here in days, but yeah, I mean, that's fair money. So, and then again, on Commerce Park, yeah, we've had an offer, but we need to put it out or sell. In my opinion, we don't need to give it away for less than the market value.
Well, we don't, but the appraisal we got in actually had two to three comps from two thousand and seven.
Well, I understand that, but that's what we asked for and so, you know, if we want to, want to get something, we need to either, I mean, we can't, we're not professionals, appraisers. If we wanted an appraiser to give us some opinion, we need to say, well, you know, that might be pretty good and let's go a little bit along it, but that's not going to be twenty thousand dollars.
Well, the deal we go with our realtor, too, is very little commission.
I know, I know. So, so anyway, that's my soapbox.
So, the motion is to take this building out of sales for now. First, we got a second, best discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Please. Motion passes.
I think the decision that can be made now is, do we want to try to sell it ourselves or do we want to give it to a realtor? I personally need to give it to a realtor, it kind of takes us out of the bargain there. I believe the savings trap.
And if individual is already.
They can still make offers.
If individual has already expressed an interest in it, he can go to the realtor and tell her what he'd like to pay for it, she'll, she'll bring it to us.
In two or three months, if there's no other offers, then he gets.
Then we make a decision on whether to accept the offer or not.
I would suggest to you that, that it, when you sign up for realtor, you, you put a provision in there that if Mr. Williams buys it, you don't have to pay a commission on it.
That's wrong.
There's somebody else does.
We might get a higher, a lot more money.
Bring us a seventy thousand dollar buyer.
So, is that a motion? To give Commerce to a realtor?
I'll make a motion that we, this Commerce Park, got the appraised value to our realtor that we have agreed with, with the exclusion of the buyer that we currently have.
Sir. My first one, Commissioner Ashburn, my second, my Commissioner, does that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
No.
Motion passes.
I'm sorry, may I have a roll call vote on that? I didn't get the three and the two.
No, and William.
Okay, thank you.
I see, Mr. Tom?
Just a reminder of your annual continuing education requirement has to be completed by the end of the year. Y'all got to have four hours of continuing education.
Every year?
Every year.
Every hour?
Every year. Brett's got a little bit of extra time since he just got elected, but it's coming up.
When do we have to do it by?
End of the year.
You still have the information? I'll have to do it online. The last year I was able to do it in, or, leading the city.
Yeah, leading the city does a lot of that kind of thing. Well, I'll put something together and send it around. That's all I have.
Bill?
Yes, sir. Right, first item with the propane gas vehicles, Mayor, you got anything on that?
No, I talked with them and they're looking into it Tuesday and will get back with us and just put it on the side of them.
Okay, all right. The next item we have is a reference to the Lagune study. We did get notification from the DEP that we've got to make a decision by November the ninth or they'll more than likely segregate that money from the city.
November ninth?
November the ninth, yes.
So, we need to make a decision in the next couple meetings.
For sure. Do we have a meeting in November or not?
Yes.
You know, it's something that's intended by guys, that everybody feel comfortable with putting into a vote or it's something y'all want to look at.
Well, who's paying for it?
There's really no offer up the table. The last offer was if we would give them the property. We have to come back to it. That's how we're going to handle that.
We had a, a meeting last week that included Eastern Ship Building, William Harrison and some of the county guys. And we hadn't heard anything about this Lagune study since the end of July from them. And basically, they were waiting to see what happened on the, on the contract that Eastern just got. So, William told me, William Harrison told me that they, this is something they want to proceed with. I expect to be hearing from them in the next little bit of time. We've got two more meetings between now and, and the night. And so, if we can not do anything tonight, maybe have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Tom, as my understanding, there was an email sent saying that one of our wishes was for them to write a letter of intent, I think maybe on the rail side of things. Do you know anything about that?
We.
But the letter spoke that that was the, that was the wishes of the board and I don't ever remember making that one of my wishes.
We, we sent William an email outlining the things that, that raised concern at the staff level. And this email was supposed to be the basis for further discussion. We sent him that email on July the twenty eighth and we never got any response. I told, I told them a few days ago, when they asked me about that, that, that requirement certainly was not a deal killer from the city or the port's standpoint, but it was on our wish list. And they explained the reason that they were concerned about that, had to do with DOT funding, some other things and some experiences that they'd had in the past. And so, they certainly have the info, they did get that request, that we were interested in support on, on the rail brand. But they have also now heard that that's not written in stone and we're waiting on them to call us back and say, here's what we want.
I guess my problem with it is, is you say that there were concerns made on staff level, but was it concern made by the board?
The board, the only direction we got from the board was, they sent us a letter saying we give them the Lagune for fifty thousand dollars, Lagune state contribution. And the board said no. But the board also said, we want to try to make this thing work. Y'all go see what you can do to make it work. And so, we told them the issues that we had, issues like making sure we have sewer treatment capacity for the foreseeable future, making sure that the city is not stuck with the cost of whatever it takes to pay for that future sewer treatment. And how do you, how do you structure an agreement where a private company can go get public money for improvements?
All right, I don't have a copy of the contract, of the email that was sent, but can you tell me what was said about the letter being sent as a, can you tell me that?
We asked them for a letter of support for the state releasing the rail brand.
And see, my problem with that is, Tom, that's not something that we ever agreed to as a board, for that to be put in the letter or the email. And then we got an email saying that that's the board's wishes and that's not my wish.
And we've expressed that to them. We told, we gave them.
We did.
We gave them a list at the end of July of things that we needed to talk about. We never heard from them again until Wednesday last week. If, if we had heard from them, you know, a week or ten days after we sent that letter, they'd probably heard this a lot quicker. We have asked, we have asked everybody that has come close to making any kind of deal in the St. Joe property, Port property.
Say we, you're talking about me and you and the board of the city commissioners, not the board at all?
Talking about Port Authority, County Economic Development. They have asked everybody because, you know, getting rail working seems to be a.
They don't, but I just don't like. If Ben, I guess I have a problem with Ben says that we talked to the guys, well, you know, I didn't say to do that. So, I don't want to be mentioned as one of the guys that said that.
But you did say, we want to make a deal with you, we want to, we want to try and help make this thing work. And, and so, we start out asking for everything that, that we might can get and, you know, a normal negotiation is they come back and say, we can do this, but we can't do that. But we hadn't heard anything from them. It's just a matter of negotiation.
Could you give me a copy of mine? I don't know the rest of the guys who like, but a copy of the corresponding email, the position of Marine and that, put my map up, please.
Didn't go to Eastern, went to William Harrison, but I'll certainly get you a copy of it.
Thank you. I would say on that, it's moving forward. I mean, we're in, I mean, there's some big possibilities for jobs, growth, that I'd like to see the board, you know, as soon as we get some correspondence back from them, we need to call a special meeting or something. Let's do so. And it's, and I know we're in tight schedule here with the grant, too, so, I mean, if staff was getting with the mayor and call a special meeting, or whatever, to get a response back to them.
You know, I don't think it's just a grant. I think, I think the revolving fund is out there for, for a lot of different things. And if we, if we miss this deadline, I mean, we can ask for another loan if we have to. But, you know, you guys know my opinion from the get going, and I don't want to saddle the city with any more debt, especially with a study that's not going to get us anywhere. I've been supporting jobs forever since I've been up here. I don't think if we do what we don't do in the gun study, it's going to affect us getting jobs from this Eastern contract at all. There are a lot of other options out there for them, I'm not against them, I'm just saying I'm for the city and I wouldn't want to jeopardize the city's future with a study that we can't afford to do anything about if it's hostile. I mean, we, we can't do it. We may can in ten years, but we're talking about next year. And so, this hundred something thousand dollars added to our bottom line and I just don't believe it'll, it'll compensate anything for us or especially the citizens of Port St. Joe that we represent.
Well, I, I feel this way. I feel that we're getting up. How much is the study going to be altogether?
Initial cost, one seventy five.
A hundred and seventy five thousand dollar study, Lagune study on this thing, ten thousand dollars. We said as a board all along that we did not intend on lifting the bill for any of this after this study. But if we can bring five hundred jobs into the city of Port St. Joe, I'm willing to spend ten thousand dollars. And I don't have a crystal ball to say that's what we will or we won't do, but I will tell you this, I've sat here and I've lived here for twenty five, thirty years in Port St. Joe. We've talked about jobs, we've talked about jobs and we've talked about jobs and nothing's gotten done. Ten thousand dollars is a small price to pay to see what may happen. And that's my feeling, Tom.
How we're going to get down to ten thousand dollars? Any job, my memory, Mr. Anderson, how, how we're going to just be responsible for ten thousand? What if we're going to have to still borrow a hundred thousand?
It depends on how it's structured. The current structure right now is, let's see, you've got, current structure's a hundred and eight thousand dollar loan, sixty six thousand dollar grant. Now, there was talks early on about how many put in money, city put in, county, Eastern Ship Building putting in money, so if those were to hold true, if everybody was to pay the bill except for the ten thousand from the city gives.
Be ten thousand dollars.
We need to call a special meeting. We need to see what, because actually we want to, what they want to do, I think that's a really good bid, but it's about, I don't know what county's going to be, whether they can mention it to county. County had talked about putting about twenty or fifteen. I'll try to talk to them tomorrow, tomorrow.
Next item we have is a reference to Patton Park. Lot five closed on Friday, so we've got our funds for that. And we have a closing set for next week, on lot number four, so that'll be the last one. So, kudos, guys. We made our money back and then some, so it was good.
Got all the taxes. I'm going to, I'm going to, that's a lot of hard work. We all.
The next item we have is a reference to the Wigbill lease agreement. Uh, we tabled our last meeting. I think the, uh, WIG, uh, board is going to go back and look at it.
Yeah, I-
If y'all had a chance to-
Do you want me to speak or do you?
You can go ahead, yeah.
Uh, Ms. uh, Leif and I talked, uh, today and, uh, Kim Bodine has been out this week with a family emergency. And, uh, we kind of need her input. We, we want to try to get them to work with the WIG group a little bit on, on some things. And, uh, so we want to keep it on the agenda for the next and, uh, hopefully work something out that'll be very good for both sides and the city as a whole.
That's our plan.
All right, on the new business, the first item is park maintenance. Commissioner Lowery want to talk to you tonight a little bit about it?
Yeah, I, uh, probably second week I've collected, uh, I, I know we, we've, uh, had knowledge of the grant opportunity for the, uh, the park, uh, at the boat ramp around Maddox Park. And I'd asked, uh, John to look into it for me and possibly getting a crew whenever one was available to start working on clearing out and cleaning that area, not necessarily clearing, but, uh, cleaning that area around that boat, that boat ramp. And they started a little bit, uh, this past week and had a little bit of issue with the public. And I, I just asked Jim to put it, put it on the agenda for us to discuss it. Really, all I'm asking was to, to send a crew out and to clean just basically the brush up under there and around, around that boat ramp. And, uh, just wanted to see, put it before the board and see if anybody had any issue with that.
Uh, Mr. Lowery, I've, uh, I've been calling for having that done quite some time. I'm all for it, like cleaning up the wooded areas we have that, uh, I see no problem at all with it and I'll make a motion if we move forward with, uh, having that cleaned out to the extent that, uh, makes it look a little more.
I don't know, second for discussion.
I was about to miss, thought it'd be a second about Mr. President.
Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, we need to, we're barking on seven hundred thousand dollar improvements down there and, and, uh, we need to make it really look nice. And when you got bushes and brush going here and there, uh, it just doesn't look big neither and, uh, attractive. And, uh, there are quite a few areas along the waterfront that, that we advertise and, and people enjoy. And I, I think, uh, I think we should go ahead with it. Some individuals don't want to see us clean things up. I don't know their motivation, but, uh, uh, we have to look out for the city and hope so. Second, same.
Just so I'm clear, we're not cut trees, we're just clearing underbrush.
Yeah, there's maybe some even trees that do have to come out, but smaller trees, not too big.
I don't know when that brush is gone, but it's-
You're going to leave your property strewn up and stuff, but that stuff gets pushy, you know? You don't maintain, you gotta maintain.
But I mean, let's go ahead and hope there will be some trees to come out, but not all of them. Right, we're not doing big historical trees out there.
And we've got our animal tractor, the one that cuts, cuts the brush. We've got it here in town, we can, we can really make it look nice.
All right. Everybody's very busy, is that?
Uh, the next item is a reference to the Restore Act. Uh, we've got a phone call from Mr. Yeager the other day. We're planning a meeting on Thursday, uh, to look at the pot three money that's coming in. This is the money that's part of the consortium, the, the affected counties here in, uh, Northwest Florida. So we're going to get together on Thursday, look at some of the things that we should have some more information by the next meeting. The ideas we've been talking about was, uh, Beacon Hill Sewer, Cape Sewer, the ones that we looked at before. Hopefully we'll get a clearer picture on funding, uh, meeting on Thursday.
Jim, I know those, I, I, I don't think they're shovel ready, but I'll ask Clay. I know you guys have worked on, on those two things in the past to a point. I, are they engineered or just, uh, laid out as far as where it needs to be and so forth? Can you, uh, talk about that a little bit?
How did the Cape not really, um, and Beacon Hill, probably six or eight years ago, it was laid out. So some of those components remain the same, where the lift station is going to go, that's not going to change. Your dry lines and the weight on, so that wouldn't change. Maybe some other changes in there just because there's new houses, six or eight years. Probably more work than done in Beacon Hill.
My understanding is to apply to the federal government, we have to have a shovel ready program, uh, in place. Because, I mean, that's, you read anything sometime, but I think last week it was saying that the money isn't going to be there, but then you had to apply it to the federal government, you may know more about that, but.
I know that from what I'm hearing on county level, that we do need to have something that's ready, shovel ready. But, um, I, I hear also based on the, the beach renovations program, how it's a, it was a project that was ready and that's what we're moving, that the county's moving forward with. But this next round, we need to make sure that we are tracking to a point where we're, we're able to get-
And I'm probably going to fix it and tell you more than I know, so you understand that. But, um, this pot three money is controlled by the state, my understanding. So, um, the consortium has a consultant that is going around county to county.
Is that the Trump money though, pot three? That's not Trump money.
So, so this, this consultant is going around county to county and, um, trying to identify if not specific projects, at least areas, whether it's environmental or, you know, economic development or whatever have you. But, um, so I think they're still looking at it at a global level. We'll find out more Thursday. I don't know that they're going to come in and say, hey, we want to know what project exactly and dollar exactly that you need. Cause that funding is going to be set up by the consortium, which the governor hasn't even approved yet. So there's a lot of that that's still, some of those may be preliminary, but they're, they're trying to move forward as best they can. So, um, I said all that to say that I believe with this pot three money, DEP is going to be applicant on all the projects. This is just a mechanism that consortium is trying to use to get them to offer DEP. So, again, I've told you more than I know. Hopefully we'll learn more about it on Thursday. This is just one step and what I can only imagine is going to be several years.
I, I just don't want us to get passed over because we may not be ready because we've got some really good projects through the city.
Yeah, I'll follow you there.
Uh, but I'm asking you this, how far off then if we did a study or did some stuff six, five, six years ago in Beacon Hill? I don't know if the rest of you guys have heard it, but I have over the past couple of years. Had a lot of places in the Beacon Hill area and I listened here then, so I don't know that said that, you know, at one point they thought they were getting sewer out there and then something happened and they didn't. And I don't know that deal, I, I don't remember, I wasn't here.
There was a lot of interest, we did the, the Silver Beach, again, probably eight or nine years ago. That was, there was a lot of interest in places at Beacon Hill, just because it was kind of-
Would it take a whole lot just to get that shovel ready? Or how does that work?
Uh, we would need to, all the permits is a worry and not expired since it's expired, so we would need to re-permit. And then, I mean, we got dust off the plants, it's almost the same. And that's what I would need to change, but, um, you know, it's not a huge effort to do it, it's not going to be so bad. The biggest part of all of that, that at some point in the shovel ready process, you've got to know who's going to be assisted. So that public outreach is a large part of this.
Well, I've just had an-
Who's got interest, who are they, where are they? And that's something that I didn't even reach out to. They approached me and I said, look, I've got a lot that I want to add another house on, but they can't because of subjects, so I accept that. So, um, we've got people that, I think we have quite a few people paying for, for service side. And a lot of other problems to that. Do you offer an incentive for them to sign on, do you not? I tell you, there's just things you've got to figure out, aren't necessarily engineering related or permitting, but it was just things that you figure out for the project shovel ready. You know, and so, you know, that, that takes time. It's not a big effort, it takes a month or two to get the word out and get people sitting down, getting paid the tax or whatever. So, you got the permit, you got to be a little bit of time and you got, we need to go door to door, Jim.
Well, that's what we want to get y'all thinking, those are all good questions, so, no, we're going to try to take those questions and ask-
And, uh, y'all think we can do this because, and I don't know if the rest of you guys, we've done some work out at the camp, but we haven't done anything in Beacon Hill. And those people seem to be very eager to donate the silver, so I would like to try to look into that.
And, and I think they are eager, but the difference between the two, at the Cape, you can run small down your lines, all your lift stations there, big front lines are there, you're just running small down the lines tied into a lane. Beacon Hill, you need a lift station, so that's a huge challenge.
And the last time we had our new business, the Firdak Committee membership, Commissioner Thurston want to talk to you tonight about it?
Yeah, guys, uh, a couple of months back, Bill had brought some names and some, uh, told us to be on the lookout for these people that may want to serve on the Firdak Committee. Uh, one of the gentlemen that, uh, was interested in serving on was one of the guys that had brought, uh, the idea to us on the frisbee golf type deal that we were doing over there. And I might make a motion tonight that we add Lake Denton to the, uh, Firdak Committee.
I'll say- I would most likely move to Firdak, same with Commissioner Lowery, we'll go to a discussion.
Is there a spot? Is that number of people?
He said it didn't matter.
I don't think they have a lot of people on there.
All in favor, say aye. Jim, before we leave the, um, what will we have with our planning board?
Planning board, we have it coming up under city clerk.
Okay.
Yes, because at the last meeting, what happened was y'all discussed it, but, uh, we need to, we need to appoint some members on it to make sure we have-
All right, and John?
Yes, sir. Um, the only item I have on yours relates to Wee Avenue, the areas, uh, we will, you know, the issues we've encountered on Wee Avenue for quite some time, so a few weeks will be allowed to ask to take a look at this. And the most viable solution, the most economical, uh, solution we can come up with, of course, was to essentially to look at where the problematic areas are themselves individually. I think you have some supporting documents and packages related to direct purchase and then also lease, uh, particular piece of equipment that would allow us to look at, you know, the park installs themselves, milling that up, replacing that with, you know, the concrete, base and then moving down the road. And looking at that, you know, the last few weeks I asked them to open twenty, twenty-five yards of concrete. That's from first week to fifth, you know, we could fluctuate a little bit. Now, we're not familiar with the particular machine, uh, we do know it's available and it works, you know, for, for applications such as this. So, and that's, that's our solutions to the board, uh, you know, to consider. That's something you want us to receive forward, but.
John, if I understand, you're, you're basically getting cut out of square.
We're milling out the problematic areas and pulling that back with concrete, so.
How does that work when you've got a softer surface next to the concrete and you're going to cause a lift there over time?
I mean, you know, given that most of your views when they track, or they're tracking the same direction, which is what's caused the problems, it should be fine. Now, I can't guarantee that obviously a hundred percent.
I went to that factory and I saw differences in, you know, some of the lots, or some of the spots that literally was just two foot invitation. And then some of them, then five, six feet down. And I'm looking for, you know, communication purposes, is there going to be any consistency looking on the road? It's all three foot long, shooks down.
Well, it's, 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 it's almost, it's going to look like patches. I mean, that's the bottom line. And the best we can do with that would be to put, you know, uh, paint the patches black, kind of match the asphalt, the best we can. The other option is, we've discussed this for years too, is to do the entire street, but you're one point one million, we can do it.
Is that all?
That's it.
What, what was the lease, uh, I didn't get that much.
Uh, the, the lease, I think it was back, the front cover sheet. I think, I don't, no, that's the purchase, the reason was around twenty-eight hundred dollars. So that's the turtle meter out, I would give, which was universal to the purchase because you buy it, you know, you don't know exactly how, use it, fall here. If this is something the board wants to do, the biggest question I would have for you guys this evening is determining what size of area to do this, that you would like to do at that. Obviously, the park is pretty, that's my biggest concern on that. Between, you know, one block at a time, first to second, second to third, or fourth, if you have to do a map there. When some areas may end up paying premium on the concrete based on the quantity, you know, that will need. But, uh, you know, I think for at least three days, the board will open their back up and be able to start partnering once you're full.
But you're going to cut out a whole block worth of spots, so you get a lot of concrete for one trip or something.
Well, the ideal would be for us is, is not to do anything until we're newly secured, the concrete's right, you know, on a specific day at a certain time. Yeah, it's based on what we see in the machine as far as the time that we need. We would just, you know, back all that up to keep it as short a time frame as possible.
How far we're full of the concrete?
It's going to depend on the area, depends on how many patches, how many cuts, how big they are. So that's going to be it.
I definitely feel like that, if it would be in the off season and to try to get it, things done as quick as we could down there, it would be beneficial, efficient for us to go from first street to second street, move on to second street to third street, and just try to do those bigger areas at one time and just, yes, it's going to be, um, pain. I realize that, but, um, y'all, we've got to get done.
Yeah. Listen, you, you don't have any other ideas about something maybe easier than a hot, hot patch? You can just go over what's there or that and just-
I, I don't, given, you know, uh, the depths or existing, you know, depth of something asphalt, you know, you know, it fluctuates. It's, you know, you think it would be an inch and a half to inches. Get it all done in one yard? One yard run or whatever, certainly it should do that, absolutely.
I guess something too, uh, that I asked back a year ago when we had that, uh, issue with the vehicle down there that there's a problem. Is I think the core sample is one of the cores from downtown there, that is what's up underneath there, the way you can't just patch it. I mean, that's what I wanted to do too, I mean, I would believe that's not a patch it. And then, my understanding, I think Jim would tell him here, John, someone, that it's so soft up underneath there, you can't just really do that. It's just going to blow that out.
We've got, uh, we've got Dust on the Coast, uh, this month, uh, Christmas parade in December. So I don't see us starting until after the first of the year.
Either that or November first, you can knock it out a month.
Yeah, we've got Murphy's Law in there somewhere.
I, I hate Band-Aids, you know that, and this, we don't have a million dollars to spend on this project right now, so.
Where would the rental fee money come from? Is it in the budget somewhere?
We have the mic.
No, it, it's not in the budget. I hadn't looked at it, so. I don't know if that's a particular item.
I'd like to see it turned, uh, John loose with it, uh, and, uh, start, start after the first of the year. Before, you know, I know there are a lot of snowbirds coming in too, so really never going to be a good time, perfect time.
And he's got five hundred and fifty jobs, so. Four days into the winter season.
No, I'm just, no, I'm going to make a motion to turn John loose with it and then, uh, then, uh, let him decide when he's going to start. And he, and he catch all the flack. With all his, with all his experience, he'll know, he'll do the right, he'll do the right thing.
We got a vote, we got a second.
Second.
Thinking about the decision in the first.
Just make sure that we are vigilant notifying those businesses downtown, because they will be furious.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, um, same here. What about, what are y'all thinking on concrete, just a ballpark question?
For, for around you?
You know, probably three thousand.
So unless it's ten thousand dollars, we can get all that done.
Yeah, it beats a million, huh?
Yep.
All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion change, brother.
Oh, John. So we're still on John?
Yeah, we're still on John.
Restroom signs for Raid Avenue.
Yes, sir.
When are you, you're in production, when are you gonna get it?
Thank you.
Anything else for John? I was gonna thank John, what he did down there on First Street, Phil, down First. He said, "It's after the very end."
All right. Any for John, anybody have anything else for John? All right, Larry.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner's, uh, uh, need your permission to draw up a bid for a filter box tonight, I have a question there. And that's from our big budget, I have this shirt. You want to go ahead and get a bid out so we can get a order, there's a big lag time to get them in, so. You found a one spares there, right? One spare is all I have.
I make the motion that we, uh, let, let Larry, uh, bids on the box.
Sound a motion, what you miss in Thursday, second, what you miss in Aspen.
We did budget it, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I got one more item, uh, please announce Justin Pearson's passing state class two license.
We were said that we called three code, but I think Mr. Mark was just making a comment. And I think if I explain it to everybody, they'll understand. Two times Dusty, we've used money out of there. One time it was because we didn't have the money for the radios. For the sheriff's department, that was a public safety issue. Being that we knew we had this seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant coming towards us. We felt like that we could be a little lax on that. The other thing was with Steve Ponce. Down there was part of the beautification of the whole area over an extra three thousand. That we had to throw in on thirteen thousand dollars for the Ponce. So I felt like that was a good deal. But I was the one that championed the boat ramp fees. And I told people that money's going back into that, and I mean that. But like you said, occasionally there may be something that public safety, I think we all. I would like to even at one point say is where we maybe get some search and rescue out of this deal for that.
I think that all of that needs to be, but, but here's the deal. Hey, I don't think anybody doubts what you're saying is right. I certainly don't. I believe all of that. I do think that you guys aren't going to be here forever. But we like to think that boat ramp is going to supersede generations of commissioners. And you guys are well intentioned. Y'all, like y'all been in on the ground force of this thing. But you know, moving forward, I just think it would be helpful for everybody if we had a little more formal thing. And if we wanted to have a methodology for, hey, city needs to borrow some money from the boat ramp fee. Let's loan it to you guys and zero point zero zero one percent interest or whatever legally, I don't know. But you know, there's ways to do that, but I think it just needs to be formalized and not like, well, we feel good about this or we didn't feel good about that. And that would just allow this great thing that you guys have created and got started to perpetuate itself. And that kind of transparency gives the people, because I'm asking myself, I mean, when I go into the details, and I'm not going to do it in nine yard business. I've got some really specific ideas that would help that ramp generate a bunch more money than it's generating right now. And, and, and I'm only really asking the people who are using it to generate that money. And so most people I know of in the civic line like those kind of deals, you know, where it isn't a standalone asset. It's a great asset for our city and we're not having to dump a bunch of tax money into it. It's, it's paying its way, you know? And so that's kind of what I'd like to see created. And so with the time going, I'd like to get involved in that.
Let me get one thing here on the earlier comments. We did have an accounting system that's segregated and set up just for the boat ramp, so that's already done.
Okay.
Mike set that up, it's totally transparent, open to the public.
Good.
I'm sure he, he would sit down, Mike, he would check against Benny.
I'm not worried about me, but I just worry about like being able to kind of go out to the public and say, hey, this is, because, because what I'm going to ask you guys to consider is that, you know, somebody like me who uses the boat ramp, I shouldn't be able to get a boat ramp sticker for free. I mean, y'all ought to charge me ten bucks a year, you know, for a boat ramp.
Absolutely.
You try that.
Not if I have a standalone entity down there that we're asking people to pay. We're asking standalone. I, I just want some ideas out of here. But there's a lot of other things that we can do that would allow us to, I mean, just real simple things that we could do. Not even get controversial with voting citizens of Port St. Joe, that, that would allow us to generate a lot more money down there. I promise you, not because I'm smart, I've just seen it done in other places. And I'd be happy to sit down with whoever's interested, if we could get into a lot of this stuff. It wouldn't cost the city hardly any money. It might require a little bit more data keeping, but, but there's some things that we could do to make it super productive. I just would like to see you guys, if it's already done, Rick, let's just publicize it a little bit about, hey, this is a transparent system. Here it is. And if we try to decide to borrow money, we always go on record to borrow it and pay it back, blah, 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 whatever that needs to be. I just think that this is going to be an easy thing to do. If, you know, there may be some controversial things about whether you guys think the users need to pay for this thing or not. Who are citizens of Port St. Joe, and that's going to be open for discussion. But I, I just think the whole thing could be done, not the city having done a good job managing, but I think I could bring some of these other ideas to you guys. They'd be easy to incorporate and they would greatly increase the revenues down there from the boat ramp, which would mean less tax money having to go into it. And, you know, theoretically, we can generate some excess money. And if there were some stipulations in our accounting about, hey, we generate extra money, maybe we put it towards search and rescue or maybe we put it towards, you know, beautification or whatever. But I, I, you guys two want to say it, I don't need it. So I guess what I'd like you guys to do is, is to, is to, to, to allow me to sit down with somebody who is interested in this thing. Let me put together some ideas, let them, and me come back to you guys with some detailed, specific things that I think would really help the boat ramp make a bunch more money. And then see what y'all think about it.
I would think you'd get together with Jim and Mike on that part of it. And then, then I think Mike will just be trying to figure out what's best for the boaters and the best design. We got the design, but there's some tweaks we make to it.
I mean, as far as the design of that, I haven't looked at it yet, but the only thing that we have really a problem with our boat ramp now is we got all those concrete bulkheads that are unusable. You know, um.
All, all that's going to be.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, if we can take every bit of square inch of waterfront real estate down there and make it boat friendly. And, I mean, I personally use handicap accessible stuff a lot. And, and, and so, you know, using the city pier down there is for Douglas is not that difficult. We rolled him right down that middle aisle and pick him up out of his wheelchair and put him in the boat. It, it worked pretty good. But it'd be nice if you didn't just have that one dock to do it on, if you could actually get him off on several sides. Because sometimes you can only get off on one side. We have to wait in line for boats to move out so we can get in on the right side of that one pier. But it's, I'm real happy with, with, with the way it is. I mean, it works good. But, but that'd be my only suggestion is make sure that all the bulkheads all the way around are boat accessible and boat friendly. And I think that's going to solve a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dusty.
Hi Clay. Back to it.
Clay, will it be money you think we'll have to know when the bids come in, but for dressing it up a little bit? We talked about that earlier with cleaning the brush and the granite rock thing. I think we really, it just looks like we take dump trucks, a little rip route and demolished buildings and dumping it down there. And it's just a.
A bunch of sidewalks.
Yeah, we, a couple of things I need to follow.
Clean it down.
Yeah, and we appreciate what it's done for us for all these years, but now let's try to upgrade it.
Yeah, no, I, in terms of the money, yeah, well, there's a couple of things I need to check on from our side.
Oh, we can't see what, right?
See what we can't, can't do with it. The grain and some of that for Indians and that. Those are things I need to check on. Any, any more direction thoughts on step downs, no step downs?
I think we've agreed last week, and y'all tell me if I'm wrong, we just, we just want to go do it on one side and not on the other side. You know, still what it's going to do, it just narrows it a much more.
Am I correct in saying that?
Step down on one side, that's kind of the consensus I got globally.
Either on the south side there or maybe the far end, the core side. Because you can't really do both.
Yeah.
Like that?
Step down the short side, Dusty.
Basically, we're talking about step. Step down all of the camp and then also step down all of the dock. So this dock will go down.
So is this right here, this is concrete?
It'd be about the same elevation anyway.
Okay.
Actually two steps.
Okay, so this is the bulkhead. And then this, this is where you both can be. Yeah, I mean, it would be good too if we had, that's a pretty big drop in there.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if you had some kind of a ramp coming down off the end of that concrete.
It will.
Yeah. So you could take a wheelchair.
So there's about a difference between this, this, and that's what that needs to be.
This is Dusty. Dusty, ideas you have on handicap accessibility too.
Okay, yeah, I will. I thought. Yeah, I mean, I'm an expert in that.
We need, we need that feedback.
That looks good. I mean, that'd be awesome, having that much dock right there.
Right, it was approached by one of the, one of the fishing captains that had a concern about landing out there. It's very difficult now being coming in at night. You almost hit the center of that dock. If there's any way to get like. On either one or both sides.
Yes, sir.
It's very dark out there. In fact, Jim told me one day, you know, he said, while the lights are parked around, it's the fishing captains are turning the lights on the park. So you'll see.
So, so your dock.
Right about the concrete.
What is up here?
There's lights on the, on the dock.
This right there on the concrete pier.
Well, you could put something there, but I'm saying on either side of the coyote.
All the way out toward, toward the gazebo.
Just something where they can see that center dock. They're going to know where the left and right edges are.
Is it going to be light?
That's what we're talking about. It's not in that plane.
It'd be nice to have some street lights down there. Because it's not already danger. Street lights, one, one or two street lights. Street lights right there or right over here.
That's exactly what we're looking at.
I think that needs to happen from a security standpoint too.
Get some silver lights. That was a question. Wait a minute, enough, we'll, wait a minute, don't sell her. We'll finish, let me check on those few things. We'll put the final details on this and get it advertised.
Long we have a new engineering coming along?
Yes, it is. We've, yeah, we've done the modeling that we need to do on the line size. And we're working on getting all the existing utilities put in drawings.
Um, you know, one other thing Clay that could happen, and I'll let you guys have the mind to do it. We can put some kind of like a covered gazebo or something out here. Just because what happens a lot of times is people, if it starts to rain or there's thunderstorm, people are scalping. They'll kind of rush back to the, to the, to the dock, you know? And it'd be kind of nice to have a little place there, people get out of the rain or get out of the weather. And then also, what a beautiful place to have picnic right there. I mean, I think we, and I don't know if this needs to happen in this project, but maybe in the future.
There's a lot of space right there.
That'd be a nice thing for the city. I mean, get out and look at how Mexico Beach does their park down there. They've got those little picnic tables all up and down there and straight fishing right out. I mean, people like that. That's a, that's a nice, so if we could do some kind of covered gazebo, picnic tables or whatever similar.
You play all those ideas, I love them.
If it fits into the amount of money we.
Yeah, I was.
But if it doesn't, that's a great, that's a great project for a boat ramp, please. That's a great project for boat ramp, please.
Absolutely.
So if we can't do it in the other one.
Yeah.
Clay, were you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right, let me ask you something. Pretty frightening?
Yes.
Yes, let's, we're going to finish here as attention is.
Okay. Trying to get these out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Clay.
Thank you.
All right, on code enforcement, Jim, you want to talk about this island we got?
Yes, sir, I can. Under code enforcement, one of the islands we have is three oh three Avenue C. If you'll turn over to page twenty eight, you'll see the final order of the special master. We actually had a hearing on July the nineteenth that was heard before your special master. And you had to hear it there in front of you. Since that time, based on that order, you've had sixty-two days that it's not, the property's not coming to compliance. The fines have been accruing a hundred dollars a day, mayor. So you're at six thousand two hundred dollars in fines and two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifteen cents in core costs. Six thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifteen cents. We've been working with the property owners to see if we could get the property taken care of. I believe they've done a little bit of work, but to my understanding to date, it's still not, it's still not in compliance.
Yeah, I wrote it over there before, I think, the meeting today, because I wanted to look at what it looked like. And I've had calls and stuff with the neighbors that live around that area and they're very distraught over this. And, you know, not that it only looked bad and got a big old dumpster sitting there and it's been there forever. They went over and they cleaned it up, so it looks a lot better, a lot better, but still needs some work. Especially fence lines, areas in the back. So, you know, and talking with Richie, he thought we should go ahead and force our ordinance and go ahead and do the cleaning up that needs to be done. So I guess we're going to need a vote on that tonight?
Yes, sir. Based on your code, if you turn over to page twenty-four, you do have the authority, once this is done, to send us out to city forces or an independent contractor. So basically, we just need permission to utilize taxpayers' dollars to go in and clean it up. We will have tipping fees involved, we will have city staff involved. We cannot get prison crews to do it, so it'll have to be our own folks to do it. And if you say you wish, we can actually lean the property and we could actually put it on the water bill if you want to as well.
I believe whatever we need to do, because we gave them a lot of chances. It's not, nothing that we, we act on in a hurry, we pleaded with people and, and, you know, people didn't realize we're serious about cleaning up your neighbors. Catholic Church, they're doing a great job. They're not pretty yet, but they're doing a good job. Over there on First Street, they did a great job over there. Everybody's got to come in compliance. We want our city to look nice, we don't want it to look ghostly.
Well, this isn't fair to the neighbors I've got.
No. Not only in sight, but animals, you know, even rats, that kind of thing, borne, any kind of thing they're afraid of.
Right. Well, my thing with it is, I wouldn't be willing to move forward unless we could go to lean on it or on the water bill. Because if not, then the taxpayers are going to have to eat.
Yeah, because they don't sell it. If the property is never sold when we get our money.
That's right.
So you have to just not put it on the water bill. If that's legal, I don't know.
If it's put on the water bill, it's just outstanding.
It'd be a special pickup, is what it would be. We do it for folks when we go, when they leave it out by the road. If there's a big pile of debris that's left out front that we have to pick up, they tip the fees on, we charge a special pickup fee.
So you're saying just charge a special pickup fee on the water bill, but the accrued fines will just.
What you could do is you could file a lien for those and you could actually lien the other if you wanted to. And then if we get the payment for you, you could remove that lien amount if you get them for the special pickup fee. You can do that.
I mean, the lien is the strongest lien. I don't think, I'm not putting it on the water bill, but I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm.
The special pickup, you put it on the water bill, special pickup, that, that amount, the actual cleanup amount and not the fine.
The tip.
Right.
Yeah, well.
Cleaning up the amount.
Clean up the amount on the water bill and the fines, lien property.
Yeah. What we want to do is, Jim?
Do you hear what?
I'll make a motion.
I just want to throw something out. Without me having to go to you and any squad, which is who takes care of all the parks right away, something's going to put us in a corner. Something's not going to happen. So if we're doing this, I would recommend you, and then defend the person to do that, whoever that may be. Just from a labor standpoint, just don't have it all over there. Just don't have it.
Well, it'll be under, under Jim's bid threshold, so if we make the motion to do it, he.
He can go out.
He can go out. I don't know if go out for bid or just call different people and say, this is.
Let them look at it and tell them what we want, what we.
I would say I'll charge for it.
I would rather do it that way than.
Well, that's my grab of my heart of my.
And, and I mean, you, you can come back at the next meeting and say, this is what it is, but we want to go forward with it.
And if they have it cleaned up by the next meeting, I'm okay with that.
I don't agree with that.
I mean, I'm not trying to hard time nobody, but we got, we got, we have this.
Probably a, probably a dozen chances to make this drive. But if we're going to have private people go out and do this, I, I would feel better if Richie was out there and was going on, so they don't overdo it. You know what I mean? Richie needs to say, hey, this is, he should be out there when they're doing work. I hate to just send someone unsupervised on private property.
We have a motion, we have a set. We do what you want.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and, and allow, allow Jim Anderson to find a private contractor to clean up the property in question.
To where it meets code.
Where it meets code.
And dumpster you got to get out of there too.
Is that, is that hers?
I don't think that's hers.
That's on the neighbor's property.
Well, let's give, let's give a second.
Let's get, we got a second, it's about the mission aspect. In front of this guy.
I mean, I ain't just.
Yeah, I just like to throw a quick comment recommendation on that same issue there. Based upon what John was saying, I agree with him. One of the problems we have in that area there is they're not necessarily always putting it in front of their homes. They put it across the street. And I think the city needs to come up also with some type of commitment to even charging those people. Because someone is putting it directly in front of their house but across the street. And so, I mean, we're leaving that up to the inmates, but we need that to be cleaned up by those people that are living there. Rather than also, you know, letting the city have to pay for that. And like I said, in this area you're talking about now, it's been there for years. So, you know, I, I think by constantly letting them get away with it, we have one in the Holy Sinai who had to pay two hundred and twenty dollars. And hers was sent way back on the front. So I'm saying we need to, I think we need to attack all those people that are even sitting across the street.
Especially on the right. Make sure who's it is.
Yeah, well, what we, what we're looking at is here, they're putting it in front of their house, but they're putting it across the street. So I don't know if we can claim it's there, but it's there that this is across the street in front of their house.
It's not another house.
Right, it's not another house. Right, and so the city's having to deal with that by coming by even with the inmates. And I think those people also need to be responsible for that. Because if they're sitting in front of your house, across the street, and there's not another house there, it's your responsibility. And I think we need to really look at that.
We don't charge a fee as long as they put it out the way they supposed to, right? Four foot line, four foot long.
Just yard.
This is junk.
If it's anything besides yard debris.
Yeah, this is junk. Yard debris, you know how the problem with yard debris is it makes junk.
Yeah.
The city has to.
All in favor of the, ah?
Ah.
All in favor of the, ah? You have to tell the enforcement update in the back outside. Increases me and those types of things. Everybody still keep their notification every week? All right, Commissioner. We're good, sir. All right, Commissioner is good. We appreciate it, man. All right, Michelle.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, last week, we discussed, last meeting, we discussed the terms of the members of the PDRB. With the exception of Ms. McElroy, everyone wished to continue their service. We need to make some type of decision so that when we meet in November, we will have a forum, or excuse me, in October. But their terms do expire in November, but we need to take some action before then to ensure that we do have a forum.
Happen to have a meeting this month?
I have not heard if we have one for sure.
We have one scheduled, we don't have anything on the agenda this fall.
Miss Charlotte, how many members did we have now?
There would be four, six, we'll rotate off and she is one of the six, so it's five. No, sir, whose terms expire.
We'll have eight.
But then we would have three others who would remain until November of seventeen.
Yeah, I think I made a recommendation, I think nine is too many on this board. And I talked to the chair, and he thinks nine is too many, he thinks we need another one, so. So my suggestion is we reappoint the ones that won't be reappointed, but then we look at the list. And I had asked, I, I had got, like, if you can.
Yes, sir, it's ready, it's been ready since the day you and I spoke. Yes, sir.
Anyway, we're looking to see who attends the least. An open team of one meeting a year or two meetings a year, you don't need to be open this. So, you know, there's no sense in being on there when you're just going, you're thinking there's something important you want to talk about.
Miss Charlotte, you can get to about that, what we're saying.
Yes, sir, we have it in form, spreadsheet form.
Why don't we look at that, do we need to do that for next meeting?
I would like to look at that, whoever's not there, let's roll them off. Or is there wish, someone wishing not to serve?
I have not polled anyone in two thousand seventeen whose term expires then.
I mean, I'd be comfortable just appointing who wants to remain and then losing the other person through attrition. You know, the next time it comes around, it's going to be somebody else.
But then you don't have an odd number, you're down to an even number.
I've seen it. They just send recommendations to us, though, still, all the time.
I'll be happy to put the spreadsheet on attendance in your boxes in the morning. Give you a chance to look at it if we could act on it, maybe at the next meeting. I don't think we'll have, as long as we do it by meeting.
You just need to reappoint them by your November meeting.
Well, I'm all good in reappointing everybody right now, the ones that are going to be reappointed. I'm good at doing that now, everybody else.
I'm fine with that.
And we're waiting on them to see if we're going to drop to seven. And if we do drop to seven, do we going to drop off? Can we go ahead and vote on the ones that are for reappointment?
Yes, sir.
There, the, the ones that are not rotating off this year, they will be rotating off next year?
If they so choose or if they ask to be renominated, yes, sir.
Why don't we, why don't we just say beginning of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen fiscal year, that PDRB consists of seven members. And then next year, you know, we'll, we can reappoint every, you see what I'm saying?
You got eight members right now.
Right now, but the next.
It's a deadlock.
The next, well.
I'm not willing to cut it down now.
Well, we can't reappoint them all night and then cut it down.
We can reappoint once it's up for reappointment. I don't see us cutting.
Then that'll make eight, right? And that'll make eight. And then how do you cut that? After you've just reported.
I know, and that's my scare about reappointing. I'm not, but it's, now we're reporting tonight, you'll possibly make a shot one next week.
No, you can't do that.
I don't know if there's one that's going to be reappointed or one that's cut and after the meeting. Well, I'll know that until I see it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We just table it until, yeah, next meeting, we can look at that later.
I'll have that in your mailboxes in the morning.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, sir.
Citizens must be heard. You want any of all these people to speak tonight?
Briefly, just want to remind you guys, for Thursday.
Yeah, I want to talk to you about that a little bit. I hope you come up.
Okay.
It's been a saying, not the sunshine laws, that all of those can't show up and speak and say some things like that unless you announce your meetings. You put in the announcement that the city commissioners will be there and so that y'all can, I mean, you can go to them, you can go to the meeting. You don't talk to each other, although that's going to look bad. But if the, if the advertisement for the meeting is, is done properly, y'all can show up at the meeting. How long advertisement, I mean, day?
Well, it's got to be twenty-four hours before the event. It's got to be posted at city hall and at the location of the event.
So you'll need to do that tomorrow.
We, we put out the, the posting, we sent each one to, and that was just to invite. We only, we invited.
Chester, we can go, we can't talk. Yeah, if you put a notice up at city hall tomorrow, we can go and we can talk at the meeting. But if Bo and I both show up, we're not allowed to talk in sunshine about it.
You'll have, you'll have a notice next.
Now, where else is any of you? You did that for Chester and at the location.
Location of the meeting.
Location of the meeting. And the, it also, from the city's standpoint, that advertisement also needs to provide a number to call in the event that some, that a handicap person needs assistance with access. And it needs to advise that the meeting is, is or is not being recorded. Y'all's meetings need to be recorded, whether that is for.
Do they?
Okay.
If Chester needs to tell you tomorrow and get, can they do that?
We'll fix him up. Okay.
Close it as soon as more as you can.
We'll do that. Well, the main idea was actually an invitation so that, and we wanted to set it up where the, the assistants there could ask questions. And the question would be around the home question asking here at a time. And there's even the admission that they had something that, that, that they saw was foreshadowing or something that back you set back. They could make a statement, you know, not necessarily voting on anything, but, you know, at least getting a opinion.
We're not going to be, you know, seeing what we made, but.
You won't vote on anything.
This, this may get it all on the city hall door and.
Yeah, this needs to be more of a workshop. Y'all don't need to be getting in any kind of situation where you might vote on, uh, on action.
Oh, no, we won't. I can tell you, I'm not gonna be able to make it, 'cause I gotta work related, out of town, man.
Well, as many as we can, we'll go through.
My Tony F C.
And then, oh, no, thank, we also, we have the event coming up on the twenty-ninth of November. And, uh, this right here is totally different. It's gonna be, uh, local entertainment. And we call it the healing of the community simply because we're trying to bring the community together, to understand some of the things that we're trying to do when we develop it. And to make an outstanding, uh, promotion that this can be done, not just for North Port San Diego, but the city.
It's October twenty ninth, November twenty ninth.
October twenty ninth. I said November?
This is, this is a Jim?
Yes. And so I'll be getting my application in tomorrow.
Okay.
And Chester, answer your, excuse me, ask your questions from last week about the CRA membership, ERA membership. Uh, we have a maximum of seven. We've got seven now. Uh, so next year, if you have somebody interested in being on there, just notify one of the city commissioners. Somebody rotates off, if their term expires, then we have.
Okay, we have no rotation this year.
No, no, we, we just wanted to. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chester. Yes, sir.
You know, use the verbiage for the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else, any others, Mr. Speaker tonight? Anywhere?
I guess that's a better, I believe.
Oh, no, no.
All the citizens to be heard, we're Scotty and our commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner DeBee.
Don't have anything, Mayor.
All right. Hold it on, Commissioner Larry?
Just hope that storm keeps on driving.
I need to. Need to.
I don't have. All I got, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the outrank improvements, uh, I think it's easy for us to sometimes pull from that pot, even though we justify it, because we don't have anything on the horizon to work on. Uh, once this project is complete, I would love for us to have a workshop and invite all the boat users together and come up with an idea and maybe prioritize through projects that we're actually saving for. Uh, you know, we make a substantial amount of money on these fees every year, and really don't. Now that we have a brand new facility, a brand new dock, so we'll have, uh, there won't be a whole lot of maintenance, you know, we can easily come up with a hundred thousand dollars in the next couple of years, uh, and make a really nice parking lot, uh, do a whole lot of things. So I just like to throw that out there that once that's completed, we should all take a hard look at it and maybe get a group of certain citizens together and workshop it out, come up with some ideas. And that is all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Commissioner, third thing? The only thing I do have in this is to, uh, show that they can get back on top of the S system pretty automatically. We'll understand, um, that and see before we get to vote with it. And that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I just have a, a couple of things. I'd just like to, uh, make the announcement, if anybody's noticed tonight, uh, forty-five houses, people started cleaning up the land over there. They were doing some wax layering, cleaning grass, different things, so I expect that project will be, will be running along pretty rapidly, I would hope. So I just want everybody to be aware of that. Uh. Another thing, and. U-turns on Reed Avenue. I mean to tell you, it's just a total disregard for the law. I mean, if it was just once in a while people do it, okay. I don't stay in my office a lot, but I was in my office today, and I guarantee you there was four, and just turned right around to right. Right there is a sign that says, no U-turns. No way they could miss that sign. I want some tickets being given out. Tell these people, you can go one block, come around, and you'll be right back on Reed. One of these days, there's gonna be an accident, and he almost did it to me one day a while back now. But she whipped right around in front of me, and she was going that way, so I started to back out, like I was on a leash, and she whipped right into parking lot. Beside me, parking lot, and all she would do is back up and go back the other way. And I guess us as city officials caused that problem by making all them damn dumb roads coming in off ninety-eight, one way. I mean, it's terrible. I don't wanna find out if I voted for that. If I did, I apologize. If I voted for that, I apologize. It may have. If it was before two thousand eleven, I did. So anyway, uh, the U-turn is terrible, I mean, y'all can just get somebody, once in a while, do reports down there where they ain't got nothing to do, just, and watch. 'Cause it is pretty, it's more than you realize.
I mean, it's around lunchtime, too.
Yeah? Yeah. But I mean, it don't really matter what time of the day, morning, noon, or evening, they do it most all day, I think. Uh.
One other thing I wanna.
Mayor, I'm sitting here thinking the last time I did it.
Uh, the only other thing I wanna mention, my idea was before you got up about the butt ramp fees and different things, is I've had some problems. Living with what we did with the butt ramp fee money. We didn't use it properly, in my opinion. We didn't do what we were gonna say we were gonna do. And I feel like Dusty said, if we're gonna do anything with that money other than improvement, right there at the park, you should go with the law. Not just giving it away. Radios, we need them, you know, it's a good thing. I ain't got nothing against it, but I have something against the way we paid for them. And I'm pretty sure I voted to pay for them that way, but after I thought about it, that's not what we talking. We can stretch it as far as you wanna stretch it to make it work, but just what we spent on, doesn't work for butt ramp. So. I don't know if we can come back later at different times and, and go back and reissue this and, uh, take that money back and get it back out of BP money or something. I feel that strong about it myself. I don't know how everybody else feels. Well, I made a commitment to the people of this town and this city. We took that butt ramp fee, and I was with William the same way. I was pushing it too. We use that money for that, and we're not. We've used it a couple times, we should have used it. And we should, as commissioners, tell the citizens what we're gonna do, should back up and right that wrong, what I think is wrong to do.
Mayor, Mayor, I'll say this, you know, I, I was the one who made the motion to do it. I'm not backing off from it. I, I think it was of good use at the time. And, uh, and I agree with what everybody's saying. I, I don't think we need to start backing up on everything, everything we do. We've done that RA once tonight. We just gotta make up our mind how we vote. Now, you're gonna vote a lot of times, and you've already voted a lot of times, that people don't agree with. But we can't keep backing up every time we walk out of this meeting and somebody says, you shouldn't have done that, two or three people, you know, but we can't please everybody. And we just have to do what we think's right at the time, and we're gonna get criticism for it, but that, that's just the way of.
You know, that's how I am. I don't patronize nobody.
No, that's.
I certainly don't.
I tell it like it is, and I stand by what I believe in, and I was wrong on my vote.
I think all we want is just moving forward. Let's just get it organized. And if there's a way, if there's a way that y'all got to have money, then let's make it a loan, and it just goes on the books, and there be some kind of, just like anything else. I mean, that's what. We don't need y'all to go back and pay money. I'm not asking that. I just like to move forward. I've got some good ideas about how this thing can really generate twice as much money as it's already generating without costing any of us anything, really. And, uh, we just need to be prepared to handle that money. So I think what, uh, what David said is good. We need to get together, get some stakeholders together, talk about how we're gonna use this money, we're gonna generate beautify and improve.
I agree.
I agree.
All right, any questions to adjourn?